Would everyone please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to jump around a little on the agenda. I learned a long time ago, if someone's here to give you a check, you let them come right up. And the county commissioners are here to make a presentation. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the members. My name is Jared Valenzola, Plymouth County Commissioner Chair. I'm joined this evening by Commissioner Greg Hanley and Treasurer Tom O'Brien. We're here to present you with a check for $511,865. The Treasurer will also update you. We do have some additional funding for you as well. One of the goals that we gave, first with the CARES Act and now with ARPA, was our intention to not return a single penny to the federal government. So in that process, we had asked communities to submit up to 10% over what their original allocation was. Abington was one of those 10 communities. So we're really pleased that we're able to bring those funds to you this evening. And then I think, and the Treasurer will correct me if I'm wrong, that that would complete our ARPA relationship with you. But we are certainly excited about the relationship we've had with the community. We appreciate Amanda's and Petty's service on our advisory board. She was at our meeting a few weeks ago, which is our legislative branch. We can't conduct our business without them taking care of that for us, so we're really grateful for her being there as well. And lastly, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues, if that's okay?
Certainly.
Did you say a few words? I do want to thank Representative Sullivan Almeida, as well as Senator Keenan, who've been advocates and supporters of this program and all of the programs that we were able to do in Plymouth County. And I want to thank Scott and your entire team here in Abington. It's been a pleasure to work with the community, to be able to execute these funds. Municipal Building HVAC is just one of those real clean, straightforward uses of these funds. And we noticed over these years, and we haven't done the actuarial of this yet, but obviously these become projects that you don't need to bond for or ask to borrow money for, right? So on top of the fact that it's half a million dollars to take care of that one-time expense that's going to obviously improve the overall health and well-being of your employees and your buildings, think of the money that we've saved by the fact that you might not have to borrow that, right? And that's true for a lot of those projects. So I think it's an important thing that I like to note for your boards and for the public to understand that. You know, on top of the fact that we're saving that money, you're saving that money out of your operating budget, think of just the money you'd save in interest payments alone. So we're really proud of this program, and you know, I really want to thank Treasurer O'Brien, as well as our team for their work in it. With that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Hanley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I bring the greetings of Congressman Lynch, who could not make it here this evening. He's been at several of our check presentations, and he is someone who we relied on heavily down in DC to make sure those funds were secured in our name, specifically when it came to CARES, the previous program here. We were recognized by Congress as having the lowest administrative cost for money given in the country. So without the help of Congressman Lynch, we would not have been able to do that as the sole county. The success of CARES brought on ARPA and the collaboration with the remaining counties. And I think at the end of the day, the Commonwealth actually was served best by having us administer the money. Having said that, I do want to take full credit on today's weather and this money arriving in time. It was perfectly planned, 99 today, 100 tomorrow. You're all invited down here, get our seniors down here, and maybe Commissioner Valenzola will open up his expense account and have some ice cream for the kids. There's a bunch of them in the back room right there. Thanks for coming, guys. I'll write you a separate check on the side for being here. I thank you for that. No, but in all seriousness, as Mr. Chairman mentioned, this brings an end to the ARPA program, but it doesn't have to stop there. With Amanda coming on board, we have introduced several ideas on regionalization of certain job functions. Where can we collaborate with our partners in government to build a better mousetrap? You know, I did attend my first town meeting, which was very interesting for the first time, and I'm glad I had my scally cap on and my sweater because there was some good conversation. But I'll tell you, your town, or our town moderator was fantastic, and your finance committee was outstanding as well, being prepared. You could tell that as a town, you really put things forward despite the challenges. So with that, as the native son of Abington now, I will bid you adieu and thank you for four more years as your county commissioner. Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
And thanks for the introduction, Greg. I appreciate that very much.
You didn't invite me to dinner, though.
I did invite you. For those who don't know me, Plymouth County Treasurer Tom O'Brien, and I'm just here to echo the sentiments of the commissioners. We have thoroughly enjoyed working with the town of Abington, and I want the board to know, as well as the residents, what a great team you have here. I think you know it, but with Scott and the crew and the Treasurer and the staff, they have been excellent at working with us to make sure these funds are processed. One of the advantages, and the commissioners talked about this, is with the county administering it for you, we take that burden away. But there are still requirements that need to be met, and your team was very good at meeting them. And as was mentioned, we add a little extra space if there were monies that were available at the end of the program. I'm going to talk about that in a second. But I'm very glad they mentioned the support of Congressman Lynch. I actually had the pleasure of serving with the congressman when he was a state senator and I was a state representative. He understands local government, he understands regional government, he knows how important these resources are. I wasn't surprised that Commissioner Hanley took credit for bringing these resources. I will remind him, however, that my name is on the check and that it was important that you folks get these resources. Your team let us know that this was something that needed to happen. And as Commissioner Valenzola mentioned, these are one of those projects that, you know, it's hard to figure out, how are we going to fund this? How are we going to make this happen? This was the perfect project. It was well executed by your team, and we couldn't be happier to bring you these resources. As I think was alluded to, we do have an additional check. I didn't want to give it to you early because we wanted it to be a bit of a surprise. We're hoping we get invited back sometime.
As long as you keep on bringing checks.
So we have an additional check, and this was for a project that you folks had started, and you submitted to us, and there was extra work that needed to be done, and you submitted a little bit extra. So we have an additional check for $22,469.53. So we know it's not $511,000, but this is one you weren't expecting, so it maybe goes a little bit further and helps allay some of those costs. We wanted to make sure, and the commissioners particularly wanted to make sure, we got it to you before the end of the fiscal year, which is why we were glad you were able to put us on the agenda. So with witnesses, I'm going to turn this over to Scott. And you'll see that he's received those. And again, Scott, you have to keep that for seven years, not the check, just the packet, the check you can deposit. But it's important to know the support the commissioners give to the 27 communities. They were adamant, and they mentioned it, that we not return a single penny to the Commonwealth, I mean, to the US Treasury. And I think you saw many entities around the United States, and even here in Massachusetts, returned money to the US Treasury. Even the Commonwealth of Massachusetts had to return a few billion dollars to the US Treasury. But here in Plymouth County, because it's local and because we knew the needs of our communities, we were able to get every penny out the door to the towns like Abington. So we appreciate the collaboration, the effort. We thank you very much. And just on behalf of the commissioners as well, we noticed there are a lot of veterans, events happening today and on the agenda, and we just want to really thank every veteran in the town of Abington and Plymouth County for their service. So thank you for having us. I don't know if Scott wanted to add anything or anybody else did.
No, thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Thank you to the commissioners, as always. And if you find any more money laying around when you're down there, we will have a meeting anytime you need us.
Excellent. We appreciate that. All right. Thank you very much. We know you have a busy agenda. I'm sorry, we do need a quick photo.
Sure.
If that's okay.
Absolutely.
Well, as I say, our records go back to 1620. So we're going to do something to prove that we were here.
Stand right back here and have them, where do you want to go?
Tell us.
When you get here, you'll give your folks a quick big "I'm on the flag." It's Christmas at my house. Hold yourself. One, six, seven. Thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you, Scott. We appreciate you. Good to see you. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thanks for the extra check.
Next on the agenda, we are going to hear from Amanda, who has an announcement to make.
Yeah, this is a scary full room for this. Okay. To the Select Board and residents of Abington, while this may seem abrupt and sudden, this decision did not come to be lightly. Today's meeting will be my last Select Board meeting. To close the meeting, my resignation will be complete. My family and I have an opportunity to pursue a dream of ours that will take us out of state. Abington has been an amazing community, and the hardest part of this whole process is realizing we would have to leave town. In our 10 years as Abingtonians, we have learned so much and have made such a great connections and friends, and I wish you all the best. I'm not going to cry. And I love how you left the biggest agenda we've seen yet for my last meeting, so thank you for that.
Absolutely. I was going to let you off early. The one thing I didn't want you to say that you were leaving while the commissioners were here, because they spoke so highly of you being involved. I didn't want them to leave with the check.
Yeah, right. Thank you for that.
Well, thank you for your service to the town. We enjoyed having you, and best of luck.
Thank you.
On future endeavors. We have a 6:05 hearing tonight. I'm going to read the notice. The Select Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 23, 2025, at 6:05 at the Town Hall, 500 Glynnowitz Way, for Class II license transfer from Salt Shore Auto Gallery, 15 Groveland Street, to Salt Shore Automobile LLC, DBA Salt Shore Auto Gallery. Abdullah Inani, manager. 27 cars for sale, four spaces for customers, two spaces for employees, total 33 vehicles on the property at 15 Groveland Street, Abington. Motion to open the hearing?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we ask the applicants up? So can you just say who you are and tell us what you want to do?
Great, yeah. It's a part of active follow-up. I'll do that.
Unless you have a chat.
Obviously, you see how we operate now.
I'll try. So my name is Mevlut Ikiz. I am the owner of Salt Shore Auto Gallery LLC. We purchased the property at 15 Groveland Street from the existing owner, who owns the real estate and who owns the car dealership. So as part of the procedure, we're here to complete the license transfer so we can continue to running the business in the same parameters. We work with the selectmen office to comply with required plots, you know, making sure there was a COBRA check on us. So, you know, excited to continue to run the business. We think we can do it a bit better, but it was already a well-run business in the community. And yeah, that's kind of the pitch.
Okay, no, it's fine. Any questions from anybody on the board? And then I'll open it up to the crowd.
No.
All set? Anybody in the crowd want to say anything, add anything?
Good luck.
Yeah, there you go. Entertain a motion to approve the transfer?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. You're all set. Next item on the agenda is to vote to approve a four-way stop sign on Linwood and Groveland Street per the DPW director, and I think we received a grant for this, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, it's fully funded by a grant, and it's one of the most dangerous into sections, or it's right up there.
Anybody in the crowd have anything they want to add to this? Everybody know what we're talking about? Okay. Everybody's probably almost got tagged up there at some point. So, motion to approve the four-way stop sign at Linwood and Groveland?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous? Francine Bell?
My name is Francine Bell, and I'm a senior volunteer at the Office of Veterans Affairs with Adam Gunn and the Veterans Advisory Council. And the reason that I was brought on was to help to put forward a project called Abington Heroes, which I think you may have seen in other towns. It's those wonderful posters that you see on lampposts, and it salutes the people, the veterans here in our town. It has been my privilege to work with these people since January, and we're ready to roll it out. And I think you have a copy of the application form, just for all of our, for all of our knowledge of this. I'm just going to review a couple of the highlights of that form. The applications are going to be available on Monday, July 7 of this year, and at 8:30 in the morning, they will be online, and they will also be available here in the Town Hall. We're expecting a good response. I don't think we're going to have any problem getting people to do this. The first 76 applications will qualify for the 2025 banners. Others, if they come in after that first 76, will be placed on a waiting list, and they'll have to wait two years for their banners to go up. The banners will be displayed for a two-year period. The banners will go up around Veterans Day of this year, and they will come down around Memorial Day. They will not be shown for Memorial Day again until the next Veterans Day of 2026, and they will be there until Memorial Day 2027. After that, those will be retired. As you look at that form that we gave you, the intake form, you'll notice all of the necessary information about the veteran. And one of the things that I'm really pleased about that we've been able to do with this is, other towns call it hometown heroes. We don't. We call it Abington's heroes because it's much more personal, it's part of us. The other thing that I'm very, very proud of is, if you look at the back of the form, you'll notice there's a place for a sliding scale. The price of the banners is $300, but if you don't have that much money, if you are, you know, not well off, there's a sliding scale, and you can get a reduced price of $150. You'll also notice there that one of the other things that's offered to families is for a banner that could be displayed at home or in your yard or whatever. And we're looking forward to this kicking off. I think it's going to be very successful here. Do you have any questions for me?
Anybody on the board have any questions?
No, I'm excited to see this get pulled up, yeah.
Yeah. I'm sorry? What a credible opportunity for Abington.
I think it's a great opportunity, and John Stone from the Department of Public Works is going to be in charge of putting them up, and he's the final determinant of where they go. One of the things that I found in talking to other veterans agents in other towns was, that was a problem. People said, "I want it on my street." Well, we can't do that, so it's John Stone who is the final arbiter of where the banner goes.
We want to thank you for your help. I heard today that you have been instrumental in bringing this program forward.
He's pretty convincing, this guy.
Yeah, he is.
Yeah.
He sings your accolades, so thank you very much for doing this.
Thank you. The other thing that I want to mention to you is, each of the veterans groups in town, the three of them, will get one banner at their choice. Okay?
Oh, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Adam, while you're walking up, I'm going to make a couple of quick announcements. Our meeting schedule for the rest of the year, so everybody knows, is July 10 at 10:00 AM, September 8 and 22, October 27, November 10, and December 8. I see everybody writing that down, so they can all be here. And starting September 8, our meetings are going to start at 5:00 PM, not 6:00 PM. So just want to say that, so everybody knows. And we want to thank Seon's Landscape for beautifying the entrance to Town Hall with the gorgeous display of flowers and the pots that they've done for years, and I don't think they get enough credit for what they do around town, so I wanted to make sure I mentioned that. Adam, sorry to make you wait.
Thank you. Unfortunately, Roger, I don't come bearing checks.
We like you anyway.
I do have a few gifts. I'd like to start off by echoing my appreciation for Francine. Thank you very much for all you've done, and will continue to do when the applications come in to support us. I'd like to discuss three efforts that reflect on the remarkable work others in this community have done. The first one behind me is this beautiful six-foot wooden American flag made by the students at South Shore Technical High School. The flag was originally planned to be hung in Lisa's office, but I think because of the quality of the craftsmanship and how beautiful it is, it deserves to be seen by the public. And I'm here, with your permission, we'd like to hang it outside of our office, next to the town manager's office, so everyone who walks through our doors can see this and be reminded of what the flag means and represents to this community.
Great idea.
Fabulous. Next, we have our Veteran Transportation Program, which we've made some incredible strides on, thanks to the Abington Rotary Club. None of this would be possible without their help. Rick Shepherd is here with us today, representing them. None of this, again, would be possible without them. We are committed to raising $80,000 for a brand-new 2025 wheelchair transportation vehicle with a ramp. This is about making sure that veterans, widows, and Gold Star family members don't have to choose between isolation and asking for help. This project has been powered by so many generous hands. The students at South Shore Tech, we've met with them multiple times, they have designed the vehicle wrap. They've also helped us create a logo for our office. And even Reverend Dr. Christie Coburn, who spent 10-plus years researching our Killed in Action. We were going to place a QR code on the van that's going to link it to our website, where we have all of her work displayed on our website, keep their memories alive. After going back with South Shore Technical's graphic design department, we reached out to a local design company who helped update the design and bring this vision to life. There are a couple more small things that we'd like to do, but I hope you'll appreciate the vision. We plan to launch the free ride program in early 2026. We are not asking for any additional funds for a vehicle driver. The part-time driver will be paid for by the reimbursement from the aid we pay out for our low-income veterans and widows here in this community, so the vehicle driver would be paid for from the reimbursement from the Executive Office of Veteran Services. And again, I just can't thank the Rotary Club enough for stepping up and supporting us in this. So we do have the vehicle designed based off a flag from Shovel Town Fly Company. The words on the vehicle are World War II, Korea, global war, terrorism, coming from our All War Memorial, with a service member saluting. The Gold Star lapel is the pin that's given to Gold Star family members who lose their son or daughters. We have a Gold Star family and veteran support. And then the Abington Veteran Transport, we have our All Wars Memorial in the back, and then the QR code that'll link to our website honoring our Kill in Action. Lastly, I want to speak to one more project that speaks to the spirit of this town. Last year, I came before the Select Board and presented the idea of honoring our Purple Heart recipients with street signs. It was graciously approved and favorable until someone came up to me after the meeting and reminded me that I would be dead by the time we honored all 35 with street signs. So thanks to our Veterans Advisory Council and many volunteers, we came up with a new plan, and we want to do something more that displays us being a Purple Heart community other than putting signs on the entrance to the streets coming into Abington. We developed a new plan, one that unified Purple Heart sign toppers to honor all 36 Abington deceased recipients. This idea was brought to Roger and Kevin last year, and Roger pledged to secure the funding, so we moved forward with the project. I think you said you delivered with the funding in 20 minutes of phone calls, is that correct?
I think it was six phone calls in 20 minutes, and the people they called wrote the checks as fast as they could.
Thank you. Pete and Janice Walters, who are actually both here, they have spent months going through books that we had in storage, through approximately 2,600 veterans' records that we have in filing cabinets. Until then, we thought we only had six deceased Purple Heart recipients, but because of their time and effort and research, we revealed that we have 36. Each of them has a story, a family, and a legacy, and we ordered their records from the National Archives. And thanks to Phil Delaney, who is also here in the back. Phil has spent about a year going through the records, and he's creating a website and a beautiful tribute that will be revealed on Purple Heart Day on August 7 that will display all the information we've learned on our deceased Purple Heart recipients, so we can continue to have people learn about the sacrifices of our veterans who received So one of these will be made and displayed for all of our deceased Purple Heart recipients here in Abington. In order to receive a Purple Heart, you must have been wounded in combat, so it is no small feat. So thank you for your support. And one thing I forgot to bring out, sorry, Francine, was our example of our Hometown Hero banner that we will be using. None of this, none of these projects are made possible without volunteers. We have six volunteers that come into our office on a weekly basis. Every single week, they come into their time, some using the Veterans Tax Workout Program, some just coming in to support and serve. They come into the beautiful Live Edge table that South Shore also donated to our office. We have volunteers outside of our office that clean our graves, that are weeding our veteran memorials. Projects are only made possible, as I mentioned, Pete and Janice Walters, Phil Delaney, our students, our veteran organizations, our town departments, Scott, your support, all of yourselves, and Roger, thank you. These things don't happen without the support of so many people. I'm proud to share these updates, not because of what we're doing in our office, but because what we're doing with the support of this community and how we support our veterans, and it's incredible, and I'm blessed to be here. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Adam. Great job.
Thank you.
And thank you to Phil Delaney, the Walters. Francine, thank you very much for what you're doing, and continue to do, all of you, and the kids that have been helping out also. So there's a lot for you, Adam, that you have all these people that want to step up and help you, so it's great what you do. Next on the agenda is the Abington Summer Concerts Committee with an update. Come on up, Jan.
I'm short.
Me too, so don't feel bad.
Good evening. I'm Jan Prell. I'm one of the volunteers on the Abington Summer Concerts. We are appointed by the Selectmen. We're looking forward to Judy O'Brien's appointment tonight, because Nancy Reed just up and decided to retire after 20 years. And we have two openings effective July 1, so we're looking for more members to bring our board from three to five members. I will let you know, we're not here to ask for money. This is our 21st season, and we have raised all our own funds for the free concerts that are offered on Sunday nights, and we've never asked for a dime from the town. So we're very excited about that. And in the program, we've listed through last year, the 79 bands that have performed over the past 20 years, not including this year, many of them multiple times. And I'll give you an example. Studio Two, the Beatles tribute, we brought here in 2014 for the 50th anniversary of the Beatles coming to America. They were so good that we booked them on the spot for the next year, and this year will be their 12th consecutive performance. So we're excited to have them back. But anyway, we are supported by all the donors and sponsors that are listed in the center here. And sponsors are $200 and up, donors are 25 to $199. And I just got another check tonight. It's amazing that, how well it's supported, and we're very excited. It's a great thing. They're free, they start July 6, and they go through August 24. The concerts are free, we do take up a collection and intermission. The Lions Club, volunteer- The Lions Club volunteers run the snack shack with hamburgers, hot dogs, cold drinks, and snacks. And Cream couldn't do it without Cream, bringing his traveling ice cream cart, hand-scooping his cups of Richardson's Ice Cream on Sunday nights. So it's a really wonderful atmosphere. I will let you know, we have no goose poop because we have a way with geese lights and they do work. We don't have dogs because it got to be too much. It's school property, so there's no smoking, and no alcohol, that type of thing. And in the, during the month of August, we spray for mosquitoes. So if you get bitten by a mosquito, you brought it from out of town. But anyway, we're very excited. People leave there, and there's nothing left on the lawn, it's perfectly clean, there's no trash, there's nothing. We couldn't do any of this without the Select Board appointing wonderful people. Our DPW, I mean, they keep the place immaculate, mowing and everything like that, the school taking care of repairs, the custodians taking care of the snack shack, the volunteers, even our own volunteers, so I want to thank you very much for everybody. But anyway, on the back here is this schedule that starts less than two weeks, Sunday, July 6th, with the Roy Scott Big Band. The last time they were here was 2018, and they've been begging us to come back since. We always have the Abington Community Band, who the bandstand was built for because they used to play outside on the lawn of the old Abington High School. So the bandstand was built to hold sixty people, and it's ground level, there's just one small step up into the concrete, that's it, easy on, easy off. So the Community Band, and then Joyce Harrington, who was the music director here for twenty-five years, I think it was about twenty-five years, she was also one of the founders of the Community Band, and it's directed by her and Dr. Michael Smith, whose father was Paul K. Smith, who directed the enormous band that we had at the high school for many, many years. And Joyce Harrington is the co-founder of a new group called She Bop Swing that we had here last year, an all-female orchestra. So they're coming back again on the thirteenth of July. July 20th, Dale and the Duds retired in 2022, and he keeps coming back, and he keeps getting better. So he's back on the twentieth of July. Studio Two, the Beatles Tribute that I just mentioned, they're coming back on the twenty-seventh of July. We have a band that came last year, Twelve Bars, B-A-R-Z Band, for the first time, and everybody on the way out said, "You gotta have them back, you gotta have them back, you gotta have them back." They're back. We have a new group on August 10th called The Elvis Experience, starring Aiden Keen and the Blue Hawaii Band. Aiden Keen is twenty years old. He is amazing. He sang a couple songs with Dale and the Duds last year. If you want to see him before August, he was supposed to be playing tonight in Pembroke, and they canceled, they'll be there on the thirtieth, next Monday night, because that's where we were going to go. Last year, the most requested band was, "How come you didn't have Divas back?" How come you didn't have the Divas back? Divas with a Twist. They are performing at sea, on the first, at Cardinal Cushing in Hanover, they'll be at that area. So we had them in 2023, last year was our twentieth, so we brought some new people and some oldie returns, and we didn't bring them back, and we got asked. They're coming back, so they'll be here on August 17th. And the last one, August 24th, to close out with, the name might freak you out a bit, it's Booty Vortex. They are phenomenal. If you have not seen them, they are disco funk groove, they are also Boston's nighttime 2024 Award winners for the best music group. They're an eleven-piece band, they are more energy than I have being here, you know, for four or five hours on a Sunday night. So if you want to see some real fun dancing, singing, all the music that you really know, come see Booty Vortex. So that's our lineup this year for our twenty-first season, and we made our goal with all our fundraising, so we're very, very thankful for that. Once again, it's all paid for. And again, we need two new members, we're looking for those effective July 1st, so we're hoping that you're going to get a swamp of people wanting to join the committee and looking forward to Judy coming on board. Mike was going to try and be here tonight, Mike was appointed last year, but he didn't think he'd make it from Billwork in time. But anyway, so he has developed a fantastic website, abingtonsummerconcerts.com. So if you want to check out what's going on, what's gone on before, we want to thank Abington Cam, who videotapes all our concerts. And if you go to our link for abingtonsummerconcerts.com, there's a separate link to Abington Cam with about forty-three videos from our concerts over the past five years. Some of them duplicates because, of course, the band has been back or something, but it's really, it's really exciting. So I want to thank everybody, you know, especially the Select Board for the support, and the townspeople, and actually, many out-of-towners, we get a lot of checks from out-of-town, too, but we couldn't do it without the support. And we always put on here the attendees at the 2024 concerts because of the collections that we do take up. We don't want any rain, it was very difficult last year, and we do need some, help with some transportation. If a van becomes available somewhere, we really, really could use that. We haven't had, didn't have a van last year, we rented one, and it's too expensive for us to be able to afford to do it, but we need something similar to the senior van to be able to get people on and off and transport them from the very far parking spaces, because they're parked almost to Route 18 when we have it. Our average concert can be eight hundred to twelve hundred people, so we get a really, really good turnout. And Beatles usually bring in a thousand to fourteen hundred, so we have a great track record. So I want to thank everybody for that. The schedules are around town, we have some here if anybody wants them tonight, Judy has a few, they have some downstairs, and we hope to see some of you come to the concerts. They're free, so please, please come during the summer, July 6th through August 24th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. every Sunday night. If you don't know where the Katherine and Joseph Nisby Bandstand is, it's across the parking lot in the Millennium Memorial Complex, and the sign is right there. And if it rains, we don't have to cancel, we use the auditorium at the school. So I want to let you know that everybody's welcome, it's free. You can eat there, or you can bring your own. But anyway, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Well, I'll accept the motion to appoint Kevin Cogan, Deputy Town Planner, to the Commission on Disabilities.
I make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have Melissa Cook with the Teen Center Initiative Committee. Come on up.
Hello, thank you for putting me on the agenda.
Absolutely.
My name's Melissa Cook, I have three children in town, and I'm also Chair of Abington Copes, and I feel my work with Abington Copes has kind of organically led me here. I know it's a little lame, but I'm going to read from something the committee has put together.
Sure.
It's easier.
You have the microphone.
Okay. And I did make copies, too. I wanted to first start off by sharing some results from the 2024 Youth Risk Behavior Survey done by the CDC. According to the CDC's 2024 Youth Risk Behavior Survey, four in ten, forty percent of students had persistent feelings of sadness or, and hopelessness. Two in ten, twenty percent, students seriously can, can, sorry, consider attempting suicide, and nearly one in ten attempted suicide. This is like a national survey, so. Abington Copes did a survey, partnered with Abington High, we did a survey early of 2024, and those numbers kind of track with what we saw in Abington. Obviously, those are startling numbers, so it's not, should we try to do something for our youth? It's like, we have to, because we're in the middle of a youth mental health crisis. Some community members in town have, we've listened to enough parents talk about, I wish there was space in town. So we have formed the committee, and we're just trying to raise awareness for what we're doing, asking for any support. We feel it's a recognized need and responsibility for us to invest in our youth. Our mission statement, the Teen Center Initiative Committee is dedicated to assessing the needs, interests, and opportunities for creating a safe, inclusive, and engaging space for youth in our community. Our mission is to collaborate with local stakeholders, gather community input, and explore sustainable options to support the healthy development and well-being of teens through a potential teen center. Well, this will be a long, ongoing process. The committee, we're sponsoring or putting on pro-social events in town. We've done a teen night back in April, that was our first kind of event, kickoff event. And we're also doing a teen movie night this Thursday, collaborating with Park and Rec. And Abington Copes has sponsored these thus far, and we hope to continue to do them. These activities support the Prevention Framework of Hope, healthy outcomes from positive experiences, and we also meet on a regular basis, monthly basis, to plan future events and talk about fundraising, any potential grants. We're looking for support, collaboration, and ideas to help promote healthy development of Abington youth, short and long-term options and goals, safe and community-oriented options for teens to feel welcome, a place to call home outside of school. We know, like, sports is a great opportunity for kids, but not everyone is involved in sports, and we would love to, like, get kids off their phones, because that's strongly contributing to the mental health crisis that kids are experiencing. We just wanted to ask, you know, not on the spot, but are there any existing spaces in town that we could repurpose or share? The Frollo, the Senior Center, any room in the high schools, Beaver Brook, Woodsdale. I know they're pretty tight on space, and they have the after-care programs, but, you know, could we potentially have that space on the weekends? I think, long-term, we're just looking to start off on a Friday or Saturday night, just because it's a lot to try to do something, you know, just low-key start off doing that is our long-term, a long-term goal. And we're, like I said, we're looking to plan activities as often as we can, but we'll probably have to look into fundraising as well, because Abington Copes, you know, can't, we don't have unlimited funds. So investing in our youth and showing up is creating a healthy future. We want our kids to feel like they matter in our community, just like the younger and older populations. We want to build a more inclusive community and help empower our future leaders. Taking care of our youth is one of society's most important responsibilities. Whether or not we are parents, we are all caregivers as citizens, and some of the committee members are here. And then, we were driving here, we found some kids just, like, looking, they were out, like, they looked like they were going to cause trouble, so we pulled them in, and we were like, hey, we're trying to create a teen center, youth center, for you guys, why don't you come in, and you can just show your support. So thank you, children, for coming, and thank you to my fellow committee members.
So these kids were paid to be here in spite of the obligation?
Nope, not at all.
Not complaining?
Nope, not at all.
Ice cream.
Yeah, ice cream.
And...
Actually, I talked to Scott today about this.
Yep.
So we're starting to bang away to try to find you a location. For instance, the Frollo doesn't work at the moment because it's not accessible.
How so? Sorry.
It's not handicap accessible. So we're, we know the certain criteria we have to, because the town have to fulfill, but we're, we're with you on this.
Okay.
You and I share a common friend, you're married to him, so I know exactly what's on, what we need to do, I see him at breakfast all the time.
Oh, has he, like, been at you a little bit about this?
Been at me since we went to high school together, so.
Just a little time ago.
It's a great idea, it's definitely needed. I like what you were saying about trying to get the kids interested in something other than their phones, because as we've talked about in the past, the volume that goes on through the phones and all, you know, all of that, that we didn't have to deal with when we were growing up.
Yep.
So yes, we're, I think I can speak for the board and say we're, we're on board, and we'll, we'll push it to the front to try to find a location, because I think that will be key to get, to get you going.
Yeah.
Or at least something we can use temporarily, so you can start having events.
Awesome.
So.
Thank you.
We think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
And you Copes, you Copes work is excellent.
Thank you.
The road race is coming up.
It is, September 21st, nine o'clock, Woodsdale Elementary.
I walked around the parking lot last year.
Yeah, that's all. Just register.
Just register and pay my fee and...
Yep, get a free t-shirt.
Get a t-shirt.
Yep.
It was, it's a great event.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, please do.
And then, have you, sorry, have you, I know I was at a couple of the initial meetings, and I haven't made a few, have you spoken to the school committee as well about the school building uses?
We have someone from the school committee here on our, on our committee, so we just haven't been able to figure that out.
The gyms are, they're a lot to be, very challenging.
Yes, they are.
To get started.
Yeah, I did the basketball winter schedule, so yes.
Yeah, you wouldn't think it was that hard, too, but, yeah.
It is, okay, yeah.
We just, we need to find a location for you to get started, rather than waiting for the perfect location.
Yeah.
Get a location so you can get going, so we can bring you in, let's get people involved, and then, I think it will, it'll take off after that, so we'll, we'll stay on it.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you for coming up. Next on the agenda is Jason DeRozio from OCPC.
Yep.
Come on up. Do you have a check?
No, man, I'm trying to talk to you.
I only take Mary Lou's.
It's Langwater Farm in East.
We are here to talk about the updated open space and recreation plan that you guys have been working on.
Yes, so my name is Jason DeRozio, I'm the Senior Planner for Housing and Public Engagement at Old Colony Planning Council, I'm here, supporting my colleague, Riannon Dugan, who has been the primary project lead on this project. She's looking to get Select Board approval of the plan, and I believe you have a letter, a formal letter to sign, sort of so that she can send the final plan to the state for review and approval.
Actually, that letter is already signed.
Yep.
Awesome, this is easy. Also, Riannon will be hosting a public meeting, the last public meeting is virtual, June 25th. I have flyers here, I will put it on the table over there, if anyone wants to, to attend, excuse me, just to hear some updates of the final plan and the ten-year action plan.
Anybody have any questions? This is, OCPC does quite a bit of planning work in the community, and they are doing an open space and recreation plan, so they need a vote from us tonight as part of the criteria to keep moving it along with the state. So that's why we're all here.
Yeah, I, I want to call out to the Open Space and Recreation Committee, it's done a lot of work to get this going, too, and we need a plan like this to move forward with a lot of grants and a lot of other things that are available to the town that have kind of been on hold. So, you know, I thank everybody for all the work they've done on this, because it has not been easy, so.
And I'm sure you all will see me again, because I am working on the updated housing production plan for the town of Abington.
So we will see you at a future meeting.
Right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is...
So do we have to vote on it?
What's that?
We need a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I distracted you, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Oh, he jumped ya. Second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you for the work, Jason. Next on the agenda is discussion of the rat problem in North Abington, which, since this one on the agenda, I'm hearing it's all over Abington, and we mean the four-legged rats, so there's no clarification. Do you want to speak, or do you want me to just carry the ball?
You can speak, if I think you're on hand, I'll get off.
Okay, so, so what's going, first of all, the Board of Health is, is on this. Why I put it on the agenda is, I live up in North Abington, Donna General lives up in North Abington, her and I cross paths and, and mentioned that they were having a problem. She lives over by North School, and I live over by Abington Bank, and the rats are crazy up in North Abington, which I'm hearing now they're around everywhere. So notified the Board of Health, they're working on it. I wanted to put on this publicly, so we can have them come, probably, Scott, in September, in the second meeting in September, so we can get an update on what, you know, what's, what can, what's happening, what we can do, what everybody can do. But Donna, do you want to say a few words?
Yes. I just, I did attend the Board of Health meeting the other night, and I'm not sure that they're on it. They kind of tried to dismiss it, it's public record, you can see it. Not the board itself, but specifically, I felt like the health agent was kind of dismissive, he didn't even want to allow me to speak. And we have a big problem with rats currently in the town of Abington, specifically my backyard. I've lived in my house for twenty-nine years this month, I've never once seen a rat in the town, anywhere in the town. They're running around my backyard like they're squirrels. It's disgusting, I don't know what the problem is, I don't know where they came from, I don't know what the solution is, but somebody with power in the town needs to come up with one, because I have hired a company, and I've got bait traps out in my backyard, but if I'm the only person in my neighborhood doing this, and the town is not respecting the fact that there is a health problem in the town, I'm just burning my money. There is no point in me even doing anything, because they're just going to stop coming to my yard, because they're pretty smart creatures, and they're going to know that I've got poison, they're going to stop coming, but they're not going to stop coming to everybody else, they're not going to stop producing, and it's, it's a problem. So I don't know if anybody else knows about it, or if anybody else is brave enough to speak about it. I didn't want to speak about it, because I feel like people are like, well, why do you have rats? I don't have rats, there are rats outside my home, and I think a big part of it, and I'm going to say something, it might not be favorable to all people on the, on the board, but I think that the chickens that we have in the town, people have a lot of chickens and a lot of coops, and I don't know that they're being maintained, or cleaned, or inspected, or what's going on. With that, the Board of Health, I think, now say that they do have a plan going forward, they had started a plan... they had started a plan, now going forward, they're gonna put that back to the top of the agenda where um they're trying to limit the number of chickens people can have and get them inspected and um I have chickens that roam my neighborhood, they're not even in a coop, they just, the people that live on Route 58 just let them roam. And I see the rats running over to that home because they're probably eating the feed, they're probably eating the eggs, they're probably eating the chickens, I don't know what they're doing, but you can see the rats just running over there, it's over by Skilling's. I know that years ago, there was a problem up in the Green Street area and I believe that they did get um exterminated to come in and they just kinda, I don't know if they, I don't know if they bombed, I don't know what they did, but they kinda took care of the greens years before you were here, so you don't have to look worried. It was years ago.
Yeah, Scott.
Years ago, I don't know about this, but it was, it was years ago and it was um.
I'm not an expert on it, but clearly we've got a vacant school up there, we've got a vacant factory.
I will also say too, so I'm um, I think I'm South Abington, I don't know, I'm near the commuter rail. Um I have chickens, I've had chickens for seven years, the rats do not bother where my chickens are, but my woods are very full of them as, and I've never seen that before. Um and so we've been kinda dealing with that with constantly destroying their nests and figuring this out. Um I have seen a big uptick since the Summer Street project had started, um I don't know, you know, a lot of times you'll see that, Rockland saw that in the surrounding neighborhoods when they built the new high school.
We have, speaking of the high school, we have them inside the high school.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
There are rats inside the high school, so maybe everybody should be aware of that, that the rats are running around, the children inside the building.
Yeah, and.
Mice and rats are inside the building at the high school.
Thanks for bringing that up, Donna.
Yeah, no problem, this probably just marks my job, but yeah.
Yeah, and it's um.
The first committee lady just came up to enjoy the meeting and.
Sorry.
And I will say too, the animal regulations, when I was on the Board of Health, we were working on the animal regulations and part of that was, you know, we wanted to have it as somebody who has chickens and has maintained it, where I don't wanna introduce these, you know, creatures into my home or into my yard or into my neighbors' yards. Um you know, it was supposed to be, alright, it's, everybody's registered, you pay the $5 fee, so we know, hey, this neighborhood is having a big rat problem, there's six coops around here, we need to inspect those to see what's going on there, that might be a source. Um when I left, I thought those were gonna continue on, I'm kinda, I will say a little disappointed that they haven't been pushed through yet, um because I thought they were finalized last summer.
Right.
Um but I think that could be a big help is for us to just understand where could that come from. You know, we already know they come from dumpsters and, you know, construction, but clearly there's something else going on. I know we're not the only community dealing with it, it's something that has just kind of exploded, I don't know if it's winter or whatever, but I hear you, I'm also frustrated and have done like a whole cayenne pepper thing.
Mm-hmm, I have poison, so.
Yeah.
And I feel bad about that.
I struggle with that, so yeah.
I feel bad about that, but at the same time.
If you need to do it, yeah.
Something needs to happen.
And I think there's that too, is that if we get to a point where we're constantly poisoning them, we're poisoning the other creatures and, you know, if, so if we can stop them and stop the population, that's better for all of us involved.
Right.
So I thank you for standing up and hopefully we can get this figured out.
Apparently there was at some point in the town, there were um bait traps that had birth control in them.
Mm-hmm.
And the public, everybody I spoke with didn't know anything about that, I didn't know anything about this. And then it's my understanding that, well, I was told by a member of the Board of Health that the birth control expired and they threw it away and they had no plans to get more. And when I mentioned that at the meeting, it was a different story, they didn't throw them away, it did expire, they're not getting more, it's not really effective, it's better than nothing. So maybe there needs to be funds put toward that, um that we at least control the population. And I know I've said this to you and I've probably said it to you, I've probably said it to you, if there were, because I've spoken to all of you about this, um if there was an abundance of deer in the town, would open hunting season and would control the population. There are too many rats, I know they have a place in the world and they're allowed to be alive, but there are too many currently, so we need to do something to control the population because it's disgusting. And the Fourth of July is coming up, I always have people over, I can't have people over the sheer because I'm afraid there'll be rats running around my yard. Like it's, I didn't go down to the fireworks at Founder's Day because I usually walk and I didn't wanna walk because I didn't want the rats to come at me while I was walking down there, so I stayed home. Like I've, I, it's now like inhibiting my life because I'm afraid of the rats. Like it's not normal to be afraid.
We'll have Scott.
Like I said, I've lived here almost 30 years in that home, I've lived in Abington longer than 30, but in that home for almost 30 years, never saw a rat.
We'll have Scott coordinate with the Board of Health and they'll report back to us the second meeting in September on an action plan.
Okay.
And I've seen him too, so I know.
Okay, and I know you've seen him, because you showed me a video, Amanda, of the manure yard, so I know.
Yeah, my, my chickens took care of a rat for me, so.
Yeah.
Which was kind of scary, but sure.
Yeah, so they're out there.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Next item on, next item on the agenda is approval of the May 12, 2025 minutes. Motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Um vote to approve the 906 Bedford Street mobile gas station for a keynote monitor. Take a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved, unanimous. Number 12, vote to approve the annual commercial garage license renewals. Okay, usually we take these all at once as printed unless someone has a problem with one of them.
Yeah, let me just find it, hold on. It's a question.
Everybody's all set from police, fire, inspectional services?
Yep, we didn't hear any reservations.
Okay. Does someone wanna make a motion to approve the annual renewal of commercial garage licenses?
I'll make a motion.
Pending receipt of all paperwork?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Next we have vote to designate no parking on Park Avenue after 7:00 PM with the exception of residents in front of their homes. We could have the police chief came up who did not bring Dunkin' Donuts for the rest of us. Thought we wouldn't see it when he came in the door. Hello, Chief.
Hi there.
I just wanna say too, uh before you get going on this, Chief, um I hope people noticed all the work that the uh first responders have been doing lately. Um the police have just been out straight, we have a great force, great bunch of guys and gals and um you're gonna hear a lot more from me in these meetings so people understand the work that they're, that they're doing. There's a lot going on in Abington and a lot we don't know about because they take care of it before it becomes an issue, so I'm not saying it because he was here, even if he didn't show up, I was gonna say it tonight, it's in my notes, but I think it's important for us to know how important uh the job is the police are doing and there's a lot going on in town and they're doing a great job to make everything safe for us. So that was it, that's my spiel, so.
Thank you, Roger. First, before I get into the, the parking and the park issue, I do wanna say, just being here tonight makes me realize what a special community this is, um all the stuff that the, the community does for the people who live here. You know, I've been in this line of work for almost 23 years now, I've worked with a number of veterans agents, I, and good ones too. I have never seen anybody put more effort into the veterans than Adam Gutt, like he is, this is, this is spectacular. Um and there's, you know, there's a lot for this community and um we appreciate the support from the community and the board and the, and the town manager. Um I, I wish I had special things to say, this, this one, uh the, this is, this is my first summer with The Grove, um this is not the first summer that there've been issues with The Grove, The Grove just opened. Um and that is just one more indication of how special this community is. I had an opportunity to drive through there today, um it was packed full of kids having a blast. But uh The Grove after dark sounds like a, like a show and, and it really can be. So um what we're asking is to have parking restrictions on Park Street and, and Park Ave, sorry, and, and Lake from 7:00 PM on. And right now, uh we've been, Lieutenant Cannon and I have met a number of times now with Kelly Johnson from Parks and Rec, she's been unreal. We're working on signage in multiple languages, English, Haitian Creole, Portuguese and Spanish for no trespassing. Um the issues that we've had since the opening, uh just a few days ago, I'll just go through them real quick if you don't mind. So on Saturday, um they leave, and, and keep in mind, I have two patrol officers and a sergeant on the road at a time. Um and so on Saturday, the, the lifeguards leave at 5:00 PM. Uh just after closing, our officers responded twice quickly to remove people from the pool. Uh at 6:15 later on that night, uh units did another search of the area. Now, these are not, our guys are just being proactive on this because it had been a problem in the past. I will say we have not had one call from the public for this as an issue, but our guys are really trying to work on keeping um the calls down by being proactive. So at 6:15 on Saturday, there were approximately 40 people in the pool and it had closed at 5:00. So trying to get all them out, um they were less than cooperative, it took a, a long time for them to come out. Uh at 7:34, they were back again, um and so basically they leave like the pool area and will go into the wooded area, which is, in the trails, which, which is open. On Sunday at uh 12:14 AM, so really in the overnight hours, um we did another check through there, uh our officers came across four men wearing masks, sitting at the, at a table, one took off on foot, um another one had a warrant for robbery, he was taken into custody and the other two were let away, nobody was from Abington. Then uh three vehicles parked outside the gates, all three had detached plates, no insurance, three people charged, so we've had now four criminal offenses there, out of there, um during off-peak hours uh over the weekend. Those people from Rockland, Stoughton, uh in Fall River. And um then at 6:35 PM, two more people were located with no active registration, so they were from Boston and Roxbury. So we wanna keep this amazing area safe for Abington residents who do, do a great job cleaning up after themselves, we're told, um not so much after hours. So what we would like to do, um and we're working with Parks and Rec and Kelly Johnson to try and put up some sort of physical barriers and more signage at the pool that will allow us to charge criminally trespassing after it closes. Um I, I've been told that the uh park used to have a uh no trespass after sunset, um so what we would like to do is have a no trespass in the park at 7 o'clock total, so it's a total no access to the park after 7:00 PM. There are no lifeguards there. Uh we do understand there are dog walkers that do like to go through there, I, I understand that, um but we can't, if we're telling people from Roxbury that they're trespassing, they're gonna point to the dog walker and say, well, what about that person? So when there's ambiguity, it creates an issue for us, for enforcement. So uh I do know there, because of this community has so many other opportunities, there's a dog park and things like that, um what's going to happen is if we keep responding to this area, it's going to make for an unsafe situation for the officers, which we're ready for. I mean, if that happens, that happens, they're trained for it, um I'm, I'm not overly worried for it. During this time, uh when we were enforcing the, sort of the people getting out of the pool, we had to rely on Whitman, Rockland and Holbrook for mutual aid responses because we were so tied up for other calls for service in the, in the, in the community. This is a, a very safe community, but our officers are incredibly busy, they were booking someone before I came here uh for a shoplifting, um like you said, they do an incredible job um keeping this town safe, people feel safe, I've been told people feel safe here, so I'm not trying to sound the alarm, but if we could have a no trespassing after 7:00 PM, we would have a lot more authority to remove people than just saying, hey, you can't be here.
Uh I had spoken to Scott about this when the chief came to meet with him. I'm 62, when I was a kid, there used to be a detail in The Grove because of the problems back then, that was a long time ago. So one of the things, beyond exactly what, what the chief has stated and I'm all for doing this, is there's a huge liability to the town. Picture, picture the, the pools in Boston that are in-ground pools that are fenced, no one's in those at night, when they're closed, they're closed. That's our pool and the pro, we're having a tremendous amount of problems in the summers there and we're having them, uh you know, outside of the summers also, but um we need to be, we need to be proactive because once something, God forbid, happens that's bad, then we seem to, yep, do whatever we have to do, well, let's get ahead of it now and we need to do that, so. Um and I had suggested letting, allowing the people that live there to park in front of their house, obviously, but I'm, I for one, before I turn it over to the board and the public, I'm all for doing this. The Grove is a great resource, when I grew up, the oldest of the six, we went to The Grove, we didn't have a pool, we were there every day in the summer for years, we loved it, it was a great place to go, we had a lot of fun, um and it was safe. So we need to, it's a different time now unfortunately and we need to um be proactive and when the chief says, this is the suggestion he makes that we should incorporate, I'm all for it. So I just wanna turn it to the rest of the board if anybody has anything to say.
I think, sorry, so we're looking, this is just to do the no parking and, but you're also saying you'd like to bring to the board at some, we're not able to vote on that tonight, that the no entrance to the park at all after 7:00 PM?
We already have that.
That's what I thought, yeah.
So.
It's just at dusk, okay.
Yeah, at dusk, so to, I guess, I don't know if we could have a, because of, because of the ambiguity for dusk, like there's not a, a specific time there. So if we had a time, we could then say, you know, when we go in there and it's close to dusk, people are like, I got a few more minutes, you know what I mean? And there's, there's an argument, right? It's like trying to put your kids to, to bed at night.
Yeah.
There's, there's, it, it's harder to remove people um just sort of, I, I don't wanna say by force, but if, if they don't leave, then they get arrested. Um so if, I'm not trying to do the whole sky is falling thing, but if in fact it comes to a physical struggle, which when 40 people are trying to come out of the pool, we, we call for mutual aid and we take somebody, somebody's bound to wanna put on a show for their, to their friends, this is just what happens, we just wanna be able to stand on firm ground to say, they were trespassing because they were here after 7:00 PM and they were in custody and, and so um that's, that's why we were sort of requested at 7:00 PM.
I just wanna say that I live in that area and there's a lot of shenanigans that go in after dark, so I'm 100% supportive of 7 o'clock, no one allowed in the pond. There, there's a lot of racing up and down the street, um I know it's bad with the dog walkers, I own a dog myself, I don't go there at 7:00, but I do own a dog, but there's other avenues if they wanna walk dogs, I totally am 100% supportive of it, there's just too many shenanigans going up there.
Anybody in the crowd? Sure, absolutely.
Hey, Rachel.
Hi, Rachel Collins, I am the chair of Park and Rec and I talked to Kelly today down at The Grove, um and this has been something that's been very much ongoing after hours. Um this year, for the first time, we are actually extending hours on two days in order to try to prevent people from swimming after hours. So the idea being, a lot of people came to us and said, hey, like, we don't get home from work till 5:00 and it's a hot day, we totally get that. And so with those repeated um comments over the years, we have, for this year, for the first time, we're trying to stay open two days later and condensing the hours, it's great for the budget and um we're hoping that it'll be more consistent, more concise with the weekday hours and the weekend hours. So, talking to Kelly today, and with the chief, getting the report from Kelly, it felt really good to hear that we have the support of the police fully, because it's coming down to our 16, 17, 18, 19-year-old lifeguards to try to get rid of people out of the pool. It's not fair to them. They don't get paid to do that. So, I want to thank you for being super proactive with us this year. In the past, we've tried to meet with the police ahead of time to try to say, like, "What can we do?" And this just feels like the time to do it, the right thing to do. Make it a set time. And like you said, there's no ambiguity of whether it's a hot day, or what does dusk mean. So, putting in different languages, I think is going to be really helpful. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sure. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you have to go out to the microphone on TV.
Hi, I'm Judy O'Brien, and I am a Civil War reenactor. And also, I am the Chair of Bringing the Encampments here to Town. My husband started it for the 300th anniversary, and I have been taking care of it since. We did not have one last year, because of the construction that was on the bridge there, you know? And then, we had not had one this year, because of other construction and things going on too. And they're all excited to come back. But when we started, we have like 100 reenactors and all their canvas inside The Grove. And they live there for the weekend. And we never had the issues that we had the last two years, that we actually had them. And I am so excited to hear this. I can't tell you how excited I am, because we do want to have everybody come back again. But the last time that we were there, we had the police being called, like, literally every five minutes. We had people coming in, in like hordes of 20 of them coming in. And they literally were, you know, when the police came through, they were chanting and like trying to push them back. I had never saw anything like it before in my life. And they were throwing alcohol, and then lighting it on fire, going up in the trees. It was just, it was terrifying. And to be a person in charge of over 100 reenactors, and all the public coming through, you know? So, anyway, yes, thank you.
I actually appreciate you bringing that up. So, one of the things that Lieutenant Cannon actually texted me on the way here was talking about, is there a movie night that you guys wanted to do? So, things like that, obviously, we could make concessions for, and this is on regular operation days, I would say.
Right.
So...
So, we don't have to bail these ladies out when they go down there for a movie night?
Yeah, you know, you used to have to have $40 on you, and now you just get out for free. So, it's, yeah. It's, so...
No, I appreciate you being proactive on this, Chief, because we know, you know, we know it's a problem, and things seem to be getting worse. So, CPW Walters has to stand up. Pete, do you want to come up?
Pete Walters, just a real quick question on the parking. How would you know that I live on Park Avenue or not? Would you have stickers on the cars, or?
So, we get to run the plate?
Okay. Okay, that's fine. What happens if I'm visiting my uncle on Park Avenue? I'm just, I don't mean to be...
So, specifically, we're looking for the spaces that have like the wooden guardrail at the end, right at the, it wasn't really the entire, so it's just, just those areas, the spaces for that. And then, on Lake Drive.
I was just going to ask a question also. I know there's been a big problem.
Rachel, can you come up? We want to get everybody on TV, we can't.
I have to make a quota.
So, I think you mentioned Lake Street as well. Is that, that's true? Okay, because I know that there, that's been difficult with the change in the parking there, and how that happened a couple of years ago, for folks that are coming into The Grove from that side. So, and I know that the residents, the reason they wanted that changed was because of the shenanigans going on on Lake Street. Not just people coming in to like enjoy their lunch and watch the geese, but there was other things going on there. So, that would be both sides of The Grove. Okay.
And as with any citation that would be written, there's always an appeal process. So, you know, if you get one, come yell at me. It's fine, I'll take it. But there is an appeal process, and obviously, if you had family or friends over, that would be, that would be something that we could take into consideration.
Donna, you had something to, you have to come? No, you have to come up. Charlie's sitting at home watching TV. He wants to see you.
I was just hoping that it's not just the pool area, that it's 7:00 PM for the whole pack, including the dog walkers, just so that, like you said.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that you guys are on the board of that. You said the pool, so basically the pool. I just want to make sure you get everything the chief's looking for, because it's important.
I think it should be everything.
I agree. Because when I was on Prince of Island Grove, and a former member of Park and Rec Commission, it was a problem. And we used to try to raise money to put a detail cop down there, and it was too expensive. And we did it like once or twice, and it was, it's a lot. So, I, all for the 7:00, but dog walkers, the whole entire park. All right, perfect.
Yes.
And if, if it does become a problem, especially on weekends, we can add some patrols. We did get that, the side-by-side buggy that we can put through there, and put two officers in there and patrol it. So, I think that, I think we have a good handle on it. And if we got the support on this, this would be much, much easier for us to really enforce. And I think, once word got out that we're not fooling around, then I think, you know, the problem could get a little bit worse before it gets better. But we are, we are hoping to handle it.
Well, it'll get out there too, that it's not the hangout anymore. So, that's what we want. I'll entertain a motion to have a no parking ban 7:00 PM on Park Avenue, except for the residents in front of their own house.
I make a motion.